Council meeting to order, if you please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Coin.
Here.
Hare. Hazelton. Lamb.
Reading of the minutes.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
I move that the minutes of the regular meeting on March 28, 2022 is prepared and submitted by the clerk be approved.
Second. Any discussion on the minutes? Will the clerk please call the roll on the approval of the minutes?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
And Rose.
Yes. I was the only one.
Sorry, I had some people out there confused me.
Reports of standing committees, the Finance Committee met prior to council this evening and will again meet in two weeks. Health, Safety and Sanitation, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Health, Safety and Sanitation Committee had a meeting prior to Finance tonight and we received an update from our Service Director, our Police Chief and Fire Chief and we appreciate them taking the time to do that and and we have no other meeting scheduled at this time.
Thank you. Public Properties, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled, no report this evening.
Streets and sidewalks, Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meetings scheduled, but I did want to mention that we talked about the solar flashing lights on the intersection of Sugar House 57 and Lexington and was very pleased to hear that the cost was much less than originally anticipated and it looks like it's going forward with a few other approvals. So I appreciate the administration's help with this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Emerging Technologies, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Request for council action, we have several for the Finance Committee. Twenty-two seventy-seven budget amendments. Twenty-two seventy-eight amend lease agreement, William Scotsman, Inc., Municipal Court. Twenty-two seventy-nine chip private rehab of four-twenty Jefferson Street. Twenty-two eighty amend ordinance sixty-one twenty-two cybersecurity insurance renewal. Twenty-two eighty-one demolition of three sixty-eight Founder Street ARPA funds. Twenty-two eighty-two fiscal year twenty-two chip grant consultant contract. Twenty-two eighty-three expenditure P-25 unification pagers for the Fire Department. Twenty-two eighty-four expenditure for intermediate citywide phone system replacement. Twenty-two eighty-five bids and design discussion, South Prospect Street reconstruction. Twenty-two eighty-six application for federal funds, state road reconstruction. Twenty-two eighty-seven easement for Medina Fiber to locate facilities on city property. Twenty-two eighty-eight West Smith Reconstruction Purchase of Real Property. Twenty-two eighty-nine West Smith Road Dedication Plant. Twenty-two ninety easements, West Smith Reconstruction. Twenty-two ninety-one West Smith Road Appropriation. Twenty-two ninety-two expenditure for EnviroSite Rover X System Sewer Camera with Accessories. Twenty-two ninety-three expenditure for advanced law enforcement. Twenty-two ninety-four amend ordinance fourteen twenty MCRC Sexual Offender Plan of Action. Twenty-two ninety-five part-time employee membership incentive discussion. Then twenty-two ninety-six amend ordinance fifty-five seventeen MCRC Membership Rates. Reports of municipal officers, Mayor Hamel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm happy to report that we're going to have the Memorial Day Parade this May 30th. And it will take place as it has in the past with the lineup in front of the courthouse and the library and Garfield School. They line up from about nine to 10 o'clock and then there's a brief service in front of the Common Pleas Court. And then it goes from Broadway in Washington west to Court Street, north on Court to Liberty, and then east on Liberty to Spring Grove and south on Spring Grove into the Spring Grove Cemetery. The whole parade takes until nearly 11:00 a.m. or shortly thereafter, depending on the length of it. And once the parade completes and people can make their way into the cemetery, there will be a ceremony at the monument there in the center. For veterans groups, it's restricted to veterans groups. Interested in taking part, you can contact Ed Zachary at the Medina County Veterans Office for information on it and where you'd be placed in the lineup. I've been asked to announce that Medina City Schools are conducting, excuse me, a facilities and redistricting survey this month. And they're asking residents or encouraging residents to go to the Medina City School website, which is www.madinabees.org. But for any of our constituents who are not as interested in going online or aren't as adept at using computers, we also have some paper copies here at City Hall that we'll forward to the schools. I'd like to welcome Amy Hopkins from First Energy Ohio Edison. She's going to speak during our public comments. She's the government liaison for us and doing a great job. And then last but not least, prayers respectfully ask all to keep the Ukrainian people in your thoughts and prayers as they continue to experience this conflict and violence. Both relatives here and those who reside in Ukraine and fled from Seim. We remain hopeful to bring this attack to an end as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Durham, Director Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just my usual reminder that the city of Medina does have an income tax and you can file that online or get assistance at rita-ohio.com. They collect the income tax for us.
Mr. Huber, Law Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Chief Kenny, Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Chief Walters, Fire Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Mr. Bacoli, Service Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a brief announcement, the yard waste program we talked about in the Health, Safety and Sanitation update is starting Monday, April 18th and will run through Veterans Day, November 11th of this year. I'm not going to go into the rules. This is our sixth year of the program and the folks understand what's acceptable and what's not. And I too wish, like to thank Amy Hopkins for coming. She works great with us. We have a lot of interaction with different things going on in the city. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Lastuka, Municipal Court.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Mr. Gladys, Building Official.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Mr. Patton, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have a report. We have two projects out to bid this week. Our South Court Water Tower Repainting and Maintenance will be out to bid on Wednesday. And on Friday, our Gates Mills Bridge Replacement will be out to bid. I did want to notify residents in the area of Spring Grove. This week, we're in the middle of the project to replace the culvert south of Union there. This week is a big week. We'll be delivering the precast concrete sections of the culvert. We're scheduling it for either Friday, the 15th, or Monday, the 18th to coincide with days where the schools will be out of session. We're trying to do this because even though it's one day, it'll be a pretty disruptive day with flatbed trailers in and out of the area all day.
Thank you. Mrs. Marshall, Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple items to note this evening. Our city Economic Development Committee met last week and reviewed the first draft of the Small Business Workforce Assistance Grant Program Guidelines and Draft Application. This is the funding from the ARPA that council allocated, the $200,000. So we had a really great discussion, a lot of feedback, a few items that were following up with our outside legal counsel. And then we'll make those modifications and bring it back to the committee in May. Once they're comfortable with it, then we'll bring it to council for review and to implement, which we're hoping to get this rolled out later this summer. And our goal is to have the application available online. So we'll keep you posted as we move forward with that project. Also, I think everybody knows that it's been a long cold winter, but we are getting ready to start up our ribbon cutting trail again starting on May 6th, which is a Friday, in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce and Main Street Medina. We have four ribbon cuttings that day for new businesses. So the first one will be at 1:00 in the afternoon, Studio A Salon, locating at 1162 North Court Street. And then at 2:00 Buckeye Leaf Boutique, moving in at 119 Lafayette Road. And then Discount Tire, they actually opened up late last year, but they wanted to have their ribbon cutting this spring. So we're doing that for them. They're at 1008 North Court Street. And then the last, that's at 3:00. And then at 4:00, the last one will be Not Yourself. And that's at 238 South Elmwood Avenue. So that's a new business that opened up like right before the pandemic and since then they've already expanded. So that's our slate of ribbon cuttings for May 6th and we hope that you'll join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dutton, Planning Committee Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you, Mr. Worley, Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple of things. First off, I wanted to clear up some information regarding the outdoor pool swim lessons and sponsorships at Memorial Park. Just wanted to share some data from last year in regards to swim lessons, programming and sponsorships. Last year, we offered three sessions of swim lessons specifically at the outdoor pool. A total of 29 classes were offered with 133 participants. The rain location, obviously we just moved the lessons to the rec center. We also, in addition to those classes, offered a Saturday morning session at the rec center for those that didn't want to come to the outdoor pool. The programs that we offered last year were paddle fit, which is essentially yoga on a paddleboard. We had four, five classes, the total of 16 participants. In addition to that, we had a sponsorship program utilizing healthy Medina funding through the Cleveland Clinic. We had sponsorship dollars, $2,500 that was allocated to this program. We reached out to the schools, worked with the principals to put us in contact with individuals or families in need to give them the information to join the sponsorship program. We also reached out to Feeding Medina County and had this information shared in the take-home bags. In total, we had 70 memberships sold and 34 of those were used at least one time. We had a balance of $2,160 that was left at the end of that program that we then rolled over into youth basketball. And the biggest challenge that we were having was connecting with the families and getting them to join and come to the facility. So we're exploring options for this year to move forward. We had an event last year through our Party in the Park Series that was free to the public, again sponsored by the Cleveland Clinic. We had 174 participants registered for the pool party at Memorial Park where we had a DJ. For 2022, this year, we intend to have two sessions of swim lessons. Despite our shortage of lifeguards and instructors, we'll have approximately 156 spots available. We also intend to bring back our paddle fit class in addition to lifeguard classes that will occur at the rec center and at the outdoor pool. We're working to improve our Cleveland Clinic sponsorship program by including one supervising adult at no charge, much like we do with caregivers at the rec center. So we're hoping that that helps entice some families to join. If anybody in the public knows a family in need or someone who might be a participant in the free and reduced lunch program, they can always reach out to us at the rec center to sign up for those as we will start selling season passes online very soon. The cost for a resident or non-resident is $100 for an individual or $200 for a family of up to five people. Just a couple of quick updates regards to parks projects. Our Miracle League of Northeast Ohio is in the final stages of completing their field expansion at San Masey Park. They're supposed to be putting down the safety surface tomorrow and it should be ready by their season opener. That was a big sponsorship and undertaking. The community came together to make substantial donations to make that happen at no expense to the city. So we're pretty fortunate to have that. We also have a lighting project at Reagan Park Field Four to upgrade our athletic field lighting to LEDs. That will be happening in the next week. And Teresa Merkel's here from the Friends of the Cemetery, who's going to share some exciting news. I appreciate the work and effort that the Friends are doing and continue to do. They're currently in the process of doing a drainage project and replacing all of the fencing on three of the four sides at the Old Town Cemetery. Thank you.
Thank you. Notices, Communications, Petitions, we have two of them, liquor permits, not to object to the issuance of a new D-5I permit to First Watch Number 669, 1001 North Court Street, Medina.
Move not to object.
Second, not to object.
Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Second one is a not to object to the transfer of a D-5 and D-6 permit from Puffs, Inc., 108 Public Square Medina to Monacar Cantina LLC, 108 Public Square Medina.
Move not to object.
Second, not to object.
Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Coin.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Unfinished business, we have none. Introduction of Visitors. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to speak and any issue or concern which pertains to the city during the portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the chair and a reasonable time limit of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there's a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the rear microphone and say their name and address so it can be entered into the minutes. And members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time?
Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Amy Hopkins. I live at 4937 Timber Creek Circle in North Canton. So I wanted to introduce myself in person. It's nice to be out finally. I am your External Affairs Consultant for the Medina County and the city of Medina area. It's just very nice to be here and to be able, I'm very pleased to serve the community. One of the things I wanted to share with you, just some current event, the winter memoratorium is over. And what that means is that as of April 15th, any non-payment disconnections will resume. So we're asking that, you know, customers call the call center and we will make payment arrangements with them. I also know that we've had some streetlight issues here in the city of Medina. I want to tell you also that I've been working with Nino to get these resolved. We're finding that there's some underground digging that is going on with some other businesses, maybe Armstrong, a few other local Medina Lit community things going on. So we're working on that. As of today, we are getting bids for contractors to help us to correct some of these underground faults that we have. And there are approximately 15 underground faults with streetlights that need to be corrected. Again, if there's anything that I can do, I'm going to leave my cards for you. Please contact me. I am happy to help.
Thank you. Thank you for your assistance and thank you for working with Nino.
What's wrong with you, Nino?
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council? Yep.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of council and the administration. I think about, just about everybody in the room already knows this from the ward meeting, but to make it official, on behalf, I'm Teresa Merkel at 510 East Liberty Street and I'm the president of the Friends of the Cemetery. But on behalf of the Friends of the Cemetery, I'm happy to announce that Spring Grove Cemetery has recently been accepted into the National Park Service's National Underground Railroad Network to Freedom Program. Spring Grove was one of 16 newly designated sites across the United States, according to a March 29th National Park Service press release. The National Underground Railroad Network to Freedom serves to honor, preserve and promote the history of resistance to enslavement through escape and flight. Spring Grove Cemetery has verifiable connections to the Underground Railroad and American abolitionist movement and is the final resting place for some of the good people who actively assisted freedom seekers and/or participated in the resistance to slavery. This is certainly an honor to Medina and its history and the role in the Underground Railroad and American abolitionist movement. Spring Grove now has the distinction of two United States National Park designations. It's listed on the National Register of Historic Places and now the National Underground Railroad Network to Freedom. And it is as well an accredited global arboretum. In closing, I just want to recognize and thank Friends of the Cemetery trustee Karen Thorne, who drafted the Network to Freedom application, which was not an easy task. Quite a big job. And to the other Friends trustees who worked to make this honor for Spring Grove and the city of Medina a reality. Thank you. If anybody has any questions about it, I can try to answer.
Thank you, and that's a great honor for the cemetery and the city.
It is.
We appreciate that.
It really is.
Mr. Simpson?
Teresa, you know how I feel about the Friends of the Cemetery. I am a member of the Cemetery Committee and have been for almost 19 years. And it is such a pleasure to work with you and other members of the Friends of the Cemetery. And we've mentioned before, Mr. Worley has mentioned before, how much the Friends has done for the city of Medina, which owns Spring Grove Cemetery, but would have not been able to accomplish some of the tasks that the Friends of the Cemetery have taken upon themselves. These accreditations in the arboretum is such an honor. The work that you've done to maintain and upgrade the chapel, the mausoleum, the drives through the driveways through the cemetery. And I don't think we could ever ask for anything more of you. It is considered one of our parks in the city of Medina and one of the most beautiful parks. So again, from the bottom of my heart, thank you and the rest of the Friends.
Thank you, Danny.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council at this time? Okay, introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions at this time. I entertain a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings on the following ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance 6322, resolution 6422, ordinance 6522, ordinance 6622, ordinance 6722, ordinance 6822, ordinance 6922, resolution 7D22, ordinance 7122, ordinance 7222, ordinance 7322, ordinance 7422, ordinance 7522, and finally, resolution 7622.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
I will make a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings of tonight's ordinances and resolutions.
Second.
Any discussion on suspending the rules to three readings? Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules on three readings?
Hare.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Ordinance 6322, an ordinance accepting the donation of a 2017 Ford Explorer to the city of Medina for use by the Medina Municipal Court Probation Department.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Lastuka?
Thank you, Mr. President. We're just requesting the council to go ahead and approve the generous donation from the Sheriff Grice for this 2017 Ford Explorer.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Motion pass, or I'm sorry, ordinance 6322 passes five zero.
Resolution 6422, a resolution authorizing a grant application to your higher law enforcement body armor program to purchase body armor vests for the Medina Municipal Court.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Lastuka?
Thank you, Mr. President. This, we were looking to purchase five court bailiff body armors and this will help offset some of that cost.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Can I ask one question, Mr. Coin?
Yes, Mayor.
Are you trading in or do you know what's happening with the old ones?
The old ones, we, two years ago, we've got, we had new body armors. This is for our new bailiffs that we have and the old ones are just kind of sitting in a box somewhere.
Okay.
They're probably five years old, if not older.
So that was my question, those ones that are five years old? I think there's some organizations trying to gather those. Chief Kenny may be able to help you. I think the Cuyahoga County Police Chiefs Association is gathering them to send them to Ukraine. Even though they're outdated, they're better than nothing at all.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, it was a request from Governor Dewine's office.
Oh, from, okay, from the governor then.
If you send me information, chief, I'll help you out there.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Resolution 6422 passes five zero.
Ordinance 6522, an ordinance amending the Benchmark Software License Agreement between Pioneer Technology Group LLC and the Medina Municipal Court.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Lastuka?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a texting application we want to add to our current case management system software. This will add the ability to get in touch with our defendants and our attorneys much faster.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Ordinance 6522 passes five zero.
Ordinance 6622, an ordinance authorizing a maintenance agreement with Lake Business Products to replace existing copiers and extend the current service contract for the municipal court.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Cindy?
Couldn't get that last one in. Thank you, Mr. President. This is just going to replace copiers that are going to be out of service, are out of a service contract at the end of April and bring new ones in.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Coin.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Ordinance 6622 passes five zero.
Ordinance 6722, an ordinance authorizing a mayor to enter into an agreement with Medina Township for the purpose of providing 911 emergency police dispatch and communication services on behalf of the residents of the township.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved it out at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Chief Kenny.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is our dispatch contract with Medina Township. The emergency clause has been requested because the prior contract has expired.
Any further discussion on the emergency clause and/or the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Hare.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Ordinance 6722 passes five zero.
Ordinance 6822, an ordinance authorizing a mayor to enter into an agreement with the Cleveland Clinic Medina Hospital Life Support Team for the purposes of providing 911 dispatch services.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved it out at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Chief Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is our dispatch contract with Medina LST, Cleveland Clinic LST. The emergency clause is requested because the past contract is currently expired.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Ordinance 6822 passes five zero.
Ordinance 6922, an ordinance authorizing a mayor to enter into an agreement with Montville Township for the purpose of providing 911 emergency police dispatch and communication services on behalf of the residents of the township.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause requested. I moved it out at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Chief Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is our dispatch contract with Montville Township. This is our dispatch contract with Montville Township. The emergency clause is requested because the contract is currently expired.
Any further discussion on the ordinance or the emergency clause? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Coyne.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Ordinance 6922 passes 5-0.
Resolution 7022, a resolution accepting the Ratty's vehicle from the Rattamacher family for display at the Medina Town Hall and Inger Museum, and for use in Medina City parades.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mayor Hamwell?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, Roger Smalley from the Archive Commission was notified that the Rattamacher family would like to donate this vehicle to the city, but we have to have council accept it in order for us to then ensure it. And a part of the resolution is as well that if the majority of the Pete Rattamacher's family in the future requests the return, that the city would be agreeable to do that. We're hoping some of our firemen may have interest in using it during some of the upcoming parades.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Resolution 7022 passes 5-0.
Ordinance 7122, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for competitive bids and award a contract to the successful bidder for the 2022 concrete street repair program.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Patton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is our annual program to replace miscellaneous slabs, concrete pavement throughout the city.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Patton?
Mr. Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Patton. When will the list be finalized and distributed?
Actually, it's finalized right now.
Okay.
Certainly passed it along.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Order 7122 passes 5-0.
Ordinance 7222, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for competitive bids and award a contract to the successful bidder for the 2022 concrete pavement joint ceiling program.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Patton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This again is our annual program. This is to, we always consider it like changing the oil in your car. It's preventative maintenance that will extend the life of our pavements.
Any further discussion on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Order 7722 passes 5-0.
Ordinance 7322, an ordinance amending the mayor to advertise for competitive bids and award a contract to the successful bidder for the 2022 pavement marking program.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Patton.
Thank you. This has been an annual program for, I think this will be our third or fourth year. It's the pavement marking, which is center lines, edge lines, crosswalks, school symbols, that sort of thing throughout the city.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Coyne.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Order 7322 passes 5-0.
Order 7422, an ordinance amending ordinance number 6122, passed March 28, 2022, pertaining to the cost of the agreement with Jackson Deacon Insurance for the city cybersecurity liability insurance.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved it out at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mayor Hamwell?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, the original ordinance was for $16,540, and there was a misunderstanding between the city and the liability insurance provider, that the city had some, had implemented a number of programs, and we were in the process of that, but it was not completed by the April 1st renewal of the insurance program. That resulted in almost a $3,800 increase. And originally, they were not going to bind it for us, which would have put the city at risk. So, through a conference call with Council President Coyne and myself, and our representatives at Crane, Langner, we got them to agree to bind it for the original amount approved by council with the idea of coming back to get the remainder and have a separate invoice for that. So, that's what this is, the difference between the 16,540, and it'll be just under $21,000, and then we'll be set for the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Emergency clause is because April 1st has already passed.
I'm sorry, the April 1st deadline, yes, sir.
Any further discussion on the ordinance or the emergency clause? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Hare.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Order 7422 passes 5-0.
Order 7522, an ordinance amending ordinance number 20121, passed December 13, 2021, amendments to the 2022 budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Garm.
Thank you, Mr. President. These are amendments to the budget, as you mentioned, most of them are transfers.
Any further discussion on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Order 7522 passes 5-0.
Resolution 7622, a resolution authorizing participation in the Ohio Department of Transportation Cooperative Purchasing Program for the purchase of sodium chloride or rock salt.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved it out at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on the resolution and emergency clause. Mr. Pacoli.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, this is for our annual salt bid participation with the state. We received notification on March 16th, and the signed resolution needs to be sent to ODOT by April 29th, so that's the deadline for the emergency clause. Every year, it's a short window. I appreciate the consideration.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the emergency clause and/or the resolution? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Coyne.
Yes.